Thanks. Good evening, everybody. I'm pleased to call our meeting to order this evening, Wednesday, December 6th, at 7:05 PM, a meeting of the school committee. First thing we'll do is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so first we need to just approve our agenda. Does anyone know of any changes to the agenda tonight? Nope. Okay. Then I'll just hand it over to you, Dr. Burrows, Superintendent's Report.
Do I have the citizen's speak?
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you. Citizen's speak, it's important. Okay, so every meeting, we set aside up to 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting for citizen's speak, for members of the community to join us for up to three minutes apiece to share their perspective with the school committee. Is anybody here this evening for citizen's speak? Is there anybody online? If you're online and you'd like to participate in citizen's speak, please just raise your hand. Nobody is online, alright? In that case, I will turn it over to you.
Okay. Thank you. So, a number of things happening right now. I've seen all of you in different places, and there's a lot of activity happening in schools and a lot of events happening at night, which has been really exciting as it always is this time of year. On the topic of celebration, we had, as you all know, our football team won the Super Bowl last week. At the town meeting on Monday, I kind of jumped out of my seat when Mike Alstom was like, "Go!" But there's been so much excitement and great to kind of see that happen. First Super Bowl ever, we were...
You should take full credit for this. We never won until you came.
People have said to me, "Congratulations," and I'm like, "Thank you." But excited about the parade and festivities on Sunday at 3 o'clock for the parade and then 4 o'clock here in the auditorium. And I know, I'm gonna say a few words. I think Lizzie is saying a few words too, so it's great to see that. You know, it's interesting, like, as people are celebrating the football team, they're also talking about all the other great things that are happening and lots of other students to celebrate too. I was at the music concert last night, and that was really neat to see. I've never seen strings and the band and the choir come together at the end for a piece. You know, usually it's, everyone does their own thing, and it was really, really cool to see them come together and a lot of people there. And pretty much anytime we have an event, there are a lot of folks, not just parents, but it seems like community members coming out too to support. So it's just, I think it's one of the things that makes Milton special, kind of a great place. The, a few of the other things that are happening right now, so the budget process. We'll be hearing from the finance subcommittee in an update later tonight. And that has been kind of one of the main focuses of the administrative team over the last two weeks. I feel like we're making pretty good progress, and I will save the, more of the information for the update later on tonight. We, as you know, we extended the timeline for the Tucker principalship, and we are in the process of putting together our team. Bev is our SE representative on that screening committee, which is great, and we'll be doing that this week. We're sending out, sending out a kind of invitations to people who have put forward their names and put out a new calendar. We had, the previous calendar, we just kind of shifted forward as we moved that forward and have gotten more applications, so I'm feeling, feeling good about that as we kind of near the next couple of weeks where that is gonna, I think it's the 20th that that position closes. And we also have two other positions that I mentioned previously. Our position for the guy down there at the end of the table, who's retired three or four times and is still here. And for the Director of DIB, and Zakiya's currently in that position in the interim role. So we'll be sending information out about that as well this week and putting together two screening committees and getting going. We're kind of in prime time right now for hiring for those kinds of positions. So those are really important positions and wanna be as together, as focused, and as targeted as we can as we go about that. We are also, just kind of in the realm of hiring, we're also have been talking about how to bring an equity lens to our hiring practice. So it's something that Zakiya and I have been talking about, and we're gonna be engaging principals next week in a conversation about that, looking at not just these kinds of positions that happen from the central office, but looking kind of, you know, all the way across our schools for Unit E positions, Unit C, all of the different positions. Looking at kind of what structures are currently in place, where there might be barriers for, for folks to either be applying or to move through the process. I think like a lot of things, and this will come out in the priority report when I, when I share that, and it's something that we've all talked about. We have a lot of strength in Milton, but we also have a lot of silos. This is one area in terms of hiring that we really want to be sure that we are all going through this process with the same kinds of core values and I think the same kind of openness. So that, that is something that we're, we wanna get to, not wait till next year. I mean, really between now and March will do, you know, the bulk of our hiring, March or April. So we wanna be looking at this now to, to just kind of like see where we are and see where we need to grow. The priority report that I just mentioned, we have been working together in the central office to, to look at, as I met with Bee today, and we're looking at the findings from the survey. I've been doing some of the narrative write-up, and we're working to, to kind of really make this a valuable foundational document, I think in the same way that we've done other audits or other reviews. We, we plan to, or I plan to have the first part of that be a real focus on the listening and learning part of the last few months. But what I think the, the value of this is, is also in assessing where we are and having that be really reflective to our community so that as we do the work that, that over the second half of this year and into next year, that implementation plan that I talked about, that that's grounded in something and it's grounded in understanding of what our needs are, of where, where, where the kind of data reflects gaps and holes in terms of our, our current systems. And then really, as I've talked about, engaging people so that they understand the why behind where we're going. So I'm, I'm really excited to finish this. It's a, it's, I'm trying not to make it too big too. This could, this could be 80 or 90 pages if we wanted it to be. So trying to find the kind of the middle, the middle ground here between, you know, being really detailed and really focused because the, this, this document is for the staff, but it's for the community too, I think, in, in kind of hitting a reset point. And the work that we will need to do as we move out of this kind of assessment period is not easy. And it can't be done by just the superintendent, just the school committee. It has to be done by everybody if it's gonna stay, and it's gonna stick. And if we care about looking at the, the opportunity gaps that our students face, that we talk about year after year, but we don't see really shift and move, then we have to do things differently. We can't keep doing things the same way. And they can't happen in isolation. So, you know, if Selena's doing something in her role and she has some relation to Baugh in her role, they can't just be working on their own, trying to fix it. They have to be working together as part of a system where we are all connected. And, and I would say that is kind of the work ahead. So I'm excited about it. I expect probably mid-January is when we'll, we'll get it done. I'm gonna probably do some graphic design on it too, similar to the entry plan. I don't know if you know any graphic designers?
He's really quiet right now.
She's very quiet, I know. So that's my report. The second part, do you want me to go into the curriculum update?
Sure, unless, does anyone have any questions on the first parts?
I'm not preempting the presentation honestly, it's just important to the points you raised about working together and having high expectations. We have a very good staff, and I think working together and doing the research and studying some of the challenges we face, we can make all those rise. And the idea that we have that expectation for our team is very appealing, I appreciate it.
Thank you. So our, our main topic here under my report is our second curriculum update. So I'm gonna in a moment hand it off to the, the team that worked together with our Unit B directors to put this together. The one thing I did want to mention is I think these curriculum updates are kind of a work in progress in terms of getting to a place where we can share a really cohesive picture. And I think it, it reflects the work that I just mentioned that we're doing to, to, I think, look at curriculum development in a new and different way. So I'll, I'll let them present this, and then we will open it up for questions and go from there.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
I can't really see the screen, I'm gonna be looking down.
So, good evening, everyone. I can't see the screen over there, so I'm gonna be looking at my laptop. Forgive me. Okay, but so we are happy to be back with you presenting our second quarterly curriculum update. And for...
Do you want to just introduce yourself?
Oh yeah, that's a good point. Hi, my name is Zakiya Jarrett. I am the interim Director of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging.
And I'm Danielle Letmore, I'm the Director of Student Services.
And I'm Garth McKinney, way down here. Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and HR.
So the three of us will be presenting together to you. And we have a brief agenda in which we're just going to review the results from our interim assessments for the kindergarten through eighth grade interim assessments, which are M-Class, I-Ready, and the EDAPEL. And then we're gonna talk about the next steps by level and by district. So to put this data in context, this is really just a snapshot of where our students are in one particular time. This isn't a broad view. And it's really important that we keep that in mind as we look at all of the data. It's give, it's gonna give us sort of an overall look of how they performed on these assessments so that we will be able to look at trends and patterns. But this isn't longitudinal. And our steady data point is that the Milton Public Schools implemented I-Ready, most computer adaptive diagnostic assessment in the winter of 2020, 21. And that helped us to capture how students were doing K through 8 and how they were learning during the pandemic. And then I-Ready has been found to have a really high correspondence or correlation with the MCAS performance, which is why we have chosen to use that. Okay. Okay, so we're gonna be showing you a number of slides of data, and there are some things that you should know. So we have some important changes to our systems of data this year. So in the fall of this year, we implemented a new literacy screener for K through 5, which is the DIBELS 8. We'll talk about that a little bit more later. And we moved away from Lexia Rapid because it has been discontinued. For grades 6 through 8, we implemented the I-Ready reading diagnostic, which as a person who used to be 6 through 8 English, it's so much better. It's great. I'm really, really pleased with the I-Ready data. With the data that it can provide, rather, not the data itself necessarily. But so grades 1 and 2 French immersion students took the EDAPEL, which is a reading assessment in French. And that was the first time that they've taken it, was this fall. And because we switched to Power School for our student information system, we've also decided to pilot an SEL screener that comes with Power School. And we are moving away from the Intellisport, which is the screener we've used in the past.
And with the DIBELS, it came as a recommendation. The state is requiring us to have a dyslexia screener a couple times a year. So the DIBELS 8 is actually used for that purpose. So we'll be using that as our dyslexia screener, and folks can, teachers can flag students who are struggling and then provide that Tier 2 intervention for that six to eight weeks before their winter benchmark or their spring benchmark to help support that. Additionally, part of the MCAS is the vocal screener, which is an SEL screener through the MCAS. So once we, we've received that data, we haven't had a chance to analyze it yet alongside that Power School SEL screener, but those will be sort of in conjunction with each other.
So this slide here shows a snapshot of students in K through 8 in their math performance. Fill up there, you see the key in terms of overall placement levels in terms of being above on grade level or grade levels below. The next slide shows comparative data for grade levels over time. So not the same cohort, but just consistent performance of students in those grades over the last three years. And you can see the note at the bottom that some of our kindergartners have a little bit of a different timeframe for testing. And then the next slide speaks to our subgroups. And as Dr. Burrows spoke about, these are the areas that we're focusing on. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm a slide ahead. This is I-Ready math placement for subgroups based on their performance levels overall. We continue to work together on our EL program. I shared in our last report. We have a tiered focus monitoring review around improvement in the curriculum, staffing, services, and the department overall. And these are some of the areas that we're working to review with Brian Sealy and the interventionists across the board.
Can I just, a quick clarification? As we're looking at this as we move forward? Because I know this has come up in some of the site council presentations. So when we're looking at the fall data and we see the yellow bars about one grade level below, that would actually be, you would, we would expect a number of students in the fall to be one grade level below, whereas by the spring, we would hope for that to be minimized, right?
The assessment is end-of-year standards for that grade level.
Correct, yeah, okay.
So if you just enter...
Just wanna make sure that's clear for everybody, yeah.
Yep, thank you. Alright, so this is the one we spoke about as a change. We had a committee of teachers and reading specialists that looked at a number of different products, and then they selected the DIBELS 8. So this is a short set of fluency measures that give teachers information on skills and benchmarks to monitor student progress. Given that in the past, nonsense words, letter naming fluency, phonemic segmentation, word reading fluency, or reading fluency, these are all the skills that we look at for kids to present to be proficient readers. This is new this year. We've had a series of professional development trainings. We have some teachers that are on stipends that did some of the trainings. We have people on the ground. And this is one of the things that, as we have parent conferences, parent teacher conferences tomorrow, one of the things we'll be speaking to parents about. So the next slide, you can see on Slide 9, overall performance for those grade levels in K to 5 and how kids are doing. Well below benchmark, below benchmark, at benchmark, and above benchmark. And again, this is one of those screening tools where the reading teams at the building will either assign classroom interventions, assign a reading specialist to work with kids, or a reading interventionist, and progress monitor for a period of time. And then our last slide on Slide 10, before I turn it over to, back to Zakiya. Again, looking at subgroup data. And these are the opportunity gaps and groups of students that we're trying to target with some of our programming, restructuring, partnering with Unit B, and accelerating growth for these students over time.
I have a clarification question on both the DIBELS and the I-Ready in terms of, we know that they're starting off the school year when this is assessed, it's almost like starting at a benchmark. When we look year over year, have we studied the interventions that we're using in both math and reading at the elementary level? And which ones have we seen work in what specific categories? And which ones do we think we might need to revisit?
Can we come back to that when we get to the next slide? Or the slide towards later in next steps?
Okay, so this slide is showing the middle school fall I-Ready reading performance. So this is the first time that we've used the I-Ready assessment. And it's, it's pretty comprehensive. It analyzes students' vocabulary, their comprehension, both in literature and in informational texts, and those are distilled from one another, as well as evaluating phonological awareness. Yeah, phonological awareness, phonics, and high-frequency words. So it's a pretty comprehensive assessment. Excuse me. And this slide here shows us the I-Ready scores broken down by subgroup. So you can see, broken down by race, by status as low income or not. So the N and the Y mean not low income or yes, low income, under each of those columns. And then by school, which for Pierce doesn't really provide much information. And then by whether they have an IEP, whether they are English language learners, and by gender. And again, the N and the Y mean no, they're not in that category, or yes, they are. But so when we look at this data, you'll see that there are some really significant gaps with some of our prioritized subgroups, particularly with students who are on IEPs and with our students who are English learners. If you look at the Y columns under both of those categories, you'll see that. There also are significant gaps based on income and based on race. So those are areas for us to, to work on.
So new this year, we have EDAPEL that is being used in our French immersion program. And this is similar to DIBELS, but for French. It mirrors a lot of the same assessments. It's in a research phase right now, but we have the ability to use a lot of the product for the same sort of things that we do on the English side. And it's been rolled out the similar way that we rolled out DIBELS in the other English Innovation Program. We stipend at a lead teacher, we've had professional development, we've had data analysis, we've set up some new things in certain, in terms of performance matters for tracking progress. So they're really kind of leading the way and jumped right into this new platform. So we started in grade 1, and then later in grades, the upper grades, we use another assessment, GB+. You may have heard over time as parents, the running records and looking at kids' reading, that's another progress monitoring tool that we use. So while I've given it the DIBELS in English, I've certainly not given it in French. Here's a picture of grade fall data for our French students and how they're doing in letter name fluency and the four different areas and how they scored this year. Also wanna thank Vivu, who's been a big part of helping stand this up and train everybody and done a number of presentations with the French department. And then our next slide is for grade 2 with their reporting categories as well as the benchmark key. And now the next steps, Danielle Letmore.
So as Dr. Burrows mentioned, one of the benefits, I think, of shifting to this approach of the quarterly curriculum updates provides the Unit B team and Garth, Zakiya, and I to work together on how we're breaking down silos and creating larger systems approach is focusing on domain. So I think it's really important to note that this is continual work in progress. And I think the next slides gives us an opportunity to be able to really think about how we're moving forward in these areas. I also wanna know that, as I think some people mentioned, that we will have more comparable data as the year goes on, as we have the winter assessments and the spring assessments. I think it's really hard to assess where we are in the fall with one set of data points, for sure. So in terms of the next steps, we'll look at, we'll look at horizontal alignment across elementary, middle, and high school, as well as our district goals for the year. And one of the pieces that you'll see is the overarching opportunity gap is within our subgroups. And so that will be the Unit B focus. This year is really focusing on students of color, students on IEPs, our English language students, and our low-income students. Work that we're doing at the elementary level includes using the fall data to identify some of our highest priority needs and intervening with Tier 2 and Tier 3 interventions. Those include both small group and personalized learning, individual learning through the I-Ready and Boost platforms, I-Ready through Math, Boost through the ELA platform. There's also, I know the team is also having, doing ongoing analysis of the Spring 2023 MCAS, continuing to look at the I-Ready, DIBELS, and EDAPEL data to help identify specific needs of students. In science, they're developing more, I think one of the challenges that the science department has seen was that different schools were presenting science information in the curriculum in different ways. So they're really looking at developing both horizontal and vertical alignment as a priority. One of the things that the team is doing is the 4th grade team is collaborating to determine the best approach of unit implementation and assessment. And so they're piloting that throughout the course of the year to see how that goes. At the middle school level, similarly, they're looking at the fall I-Ready and MCAS data, and that's really being used to help drive the need for more personalized instruction using both MyPath and the Tier 2 interventions and supports, which includes some small group pullout, short-term, six to eight-week interventions for students who are in those high-need areas. Similarly, a review of the subgroups within these assessment areas, both in ELA, math, and science, has led to prioritizing those subgroups, particularly students on IEP. As you, as you saw when Zakiya was presenting, the large, large gap for EL students and students with IEPs, as well as our students of color. And then part of the work that they're doing is some additional training for students who are working in the EL and IEP subgroup. So additional math support and math training to help differentiate instruction, looking into curriculum that is supportive of students who need higher or lower-level supports to help bridge that gap on either side. And then finally, at the high school level, the curriculum team is also looking at the Spring MCAS and then using individual student, subgroups, and item analysis reports to make adjustments to curriculum and instruction accordingly. Curriculum revision and instruction has... Curriculum revision and instruction has been focused on the design strategies in all subjects to support those subgroups, as well as professional development and training. And then from a district level, you'll hear a little bit of our, some of our budget proposals having to align with some of these goals that we have, but really looking at, starting to analyze the data from the SEL screener. So we're still collecting that Power School data and then comparing it to some of the last year's Intelspark data, as well as our local data from MCAS. Also clarifying and articulating the MTSS system. So we have great people in place. As Bev mentioned, our faculty is amazing, and we have a lot of great support. It's really designing the structures and supports to help drive some of that tiered systems of supports at all levels, tier-one, tier-two, and tier-three. So really looking at that. So that will include some of our proposals around interventionists and adjustment counseling to address both the academic and social-emotional realms. Updating training, updating and training the D cap is another, the district curriculum accommodation plan is another area where I think we need to continue to work together. There's, you know, some universal design implementations that you can do within the classroom setting that we really just need to train our educators in those areas. So really looking at how we're going to do that. And then clarifying and increasing the capacity for tier-two and tier-three supports. Another area which Dr. McKinney mentioned was the ELL program and leadership. Our increase in students where English is not their first language has increased significantly. So identified, that identified the need for more comprehensive curriculum and the need for leadership across the district. And then our students have had increased medical needs. So really looking at and assessing our nursing needs and using support to assist in providing the least restrictive environment for our students with complex medical needs. And then finally, building the capacity, as I mentioned before, for personalized learning. So identifying the universal design and best practice accommodations within the general classroom setting, and then using the data from the SST process, redesigning or designing, clarifying the SST process, which is the student support team. So if a student is flagged because they're maybe not performing as well as their peers, they may be referred to our student support team where their sort of accommodations are put in place, and it's about a six-to-eight week process. So clarifying that process and then identifying how to give them that specifically does design instruction and help close that learning gap.
Thank you for a great presentation. Does anybody have questions?
Just want to check, did we answer your question?
Well, it's, in one sense, yes. You talked about, Danielle was kind enough to share what are some of the strategies, whether it's instructional or professional development for our teachers. It begs the question, how is this different from what we did last year? And the second piece around the professional development, which is absolutely necessary given the scale and scope of the changes we're discussing. What is the follow-up for our teachers so that when they're completed the professional development, whether there's feedback from an instructional coach, or the instructional leader for the building is going back to assess whether or not some of those strategies are implemented? What does that look like in our schools? I know those are two questions, they were long, so if you repeat that, I'm happy to do that. Absolutely.
So I was gonna say, it's, when you look at this list of things that we're, we're doing and best practice, I mean, there are no secrets, right, to like what works in the classroom? The challenge we have, I think, is, like you said, like what is the, how do we build this culture that we're talking about where people are feeling like they have everything they need? As a, as a teacher, for example, I have everything I need. I know what to do in all these different situations. I know if a student's not learning, I know I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that. And that there's the continual support behind them to, people are looking at it, right? They're connecting the dots. They're, they're engaging in conversation. And if we don't have those processes in place and those connections in place, we can put all the greatest curriculum and content in, into our schools, and people, the, the staff are gonna feel that as initiative overload, which is what they felt last year, what they felt the year before, when smart people in, in offices over here thought about things and then said, here's where we're going, without the time or without the engagement of everyone. So I think, to answer that question around, like how, I think, one, principals have to be kind of front and center instructional leaders. That's come up from principals. We talked about that at our retreat this summer and have heard it from lots of people, like principals need to have the space and the focus to be instructional leaders. So that's work that we're gonna be doing and are doing as a, as a team. There are a lot of people that are carrying a lot of knowledge around curriculum. But we all, we have to be a single team. We have to be a single system. And that is, I think, in a lot of ways, that is the work that we have ahead of us. And it's, it's doable. But it's not something that we, we kind of like figure out in, in a week. It's something that we have to, to work towards. And, and, and as you mentioned at the beginning of this meeting, having the expectations and the focus and the clarity is what is gonna get us there.
And if I could just add to the first question, at the elementary level, the math piece is in pretty good shape. We've been using this I Ready for a while. We have a new curriculum into math and bridges. We have more personnel at math interventionist. So that piece is working. But now we have DIBELS, which is a new piece, Boost, the piece that goes with it. And we're doing a K to eight literacy team that's revising and taking an action plan towards our curriculum and the outcomes that we're getting there. And at the middle school level, I Ready reading is new in terms of progress monitoring and assessing kids. So we have a nice balance between what was in place before and some new things to refine the work that we're doing.
In terms of the review cycle to track the progress of the intervention? So we talked, have this benchmark date at the beginning of the year. What does that look like? Is that a six-week cycle? Like what is the time period by which we assess progress for individual students that are on these?
Definitely at least three times a year on the fall, winter, and spring. But it can happen in between there based on the teams of professionals that are working interventionist, the program director, moving in kids. So they may not always need a little intervention for a period of time. And if it's effective, we're returning them to the classroom. Then we're bringing out the kids that may be attention and support. So thankful to the additional personnel we have. We're supporting more kids and matching them with the kids with the greatest need. So that work, I think, is being refined over time, but we're in a good place right now.
Thank you.
Questions?
One question I have, so I really appreciate hearing about the work underway and the plans to identify students for interventions as, as needed. I'm also, though, wondering at the same time, I mean, I've, you know, had conversations with some members of the community, some parents who feel concern over their children who are perhaps not being challenged enough. And as we look at this data, it's great to see, actually, a lot of students in the fall, you know, mid or above grade level, actually. So a question that makes me wonder is, can you speak a little bit about sort of what's in place to support teachers in identifying steps to take for those students? You know, we're usually thinking about MTSS in relation to our struggling students, which is absolutely necessary. And at the same time, we have to also make sure that our students are challenged every day so that they remain engaged and, you know, they, they reach their highest potential as well. So can any of you speak a little bit to how you're approaching that piece? At elementary and middle especially?
So I think that SST process can be used either way. So it's not just for struggling students. I actually heard today that they actually use it for a student who was a kindergartner performing at a fourth-grade level. And so they run, they brought that kid to SST to figure out what supports do we have? What, what can we do to help the student continue to progress? Because that, you know, he's clearly bright. And so really using some of the methods that we already have in place to be able to support those students as well. That being said, you know, it's still a work in progress, I think. And I don't know if Garth wants to speak a little bit more per his history here, but, you know, I think there's still work to be done in that area to be able to support students because it typically is a smaller subgroup of students that have that need.
Just to give an example from today, we had another student who went through the SST process, was in kindergarten, and is doing fourth-grade math. So what does that look like for a kindergarten teacher? And what are the opportunities we can provide for enrichment? So that's part of the collective work, working with grade levels and training them up. They're very cautious. They don't want to go into second, first-grade territory, if you will. So we gotta find ways to provide enrichment for kids. This student right now can do a lot of the procedural things with a formula, very concrete. So we're gonna work on moving to the next levels of abstraction and trying to do other things that would be a source of challenge for that student. It's not a problem I've encountered before, but it's kind of a new challenge that we're working on together.
And recognizing that, like at the middle school, for example, or even in elementary, students might demonstrate like, you know, very high skill levels in one area. And, you know, they might be on grade level over here, but above over here. And then, so I just want to recognize, I think that does require a lot of, you know, bandwidth for teachers who are working to support below-grade-level students, English language learners, students on IEPs, and also make sure those students aren't left behind either. So appreciate the sort of continued effort on all those fronts, for sure.
Well, I think that was the genesis of where, you know, our personalized learning pillar came from was the desire to be able to differentiate in a way that didn't require lesson planning, like discreet lesson planning for every student to think, okay, today in this class of 25, this student's gonna do this, this student's gonna do this, then I'm gonna, like, one teacher can't manage that. So, you know, part of a design for learning where students are able to engage from kind of where they are and being able to be somewhat fluid and give students agency is, I think, our, our goal. I will say that in my Listening and Learning forums, a book here did come up, and it came up at the middle school, for sure. So it's something that I've shared with Bill Fish, the principal there. I know he's thinking about it and thinking about how to engage in that conversation with his staff and, and talk about that, and talk, what, what does that mean? What, you know? So it's also something that I think we need to, to understand and understand by, I think, from this, there's a parent perspective, and there's the student perspective. I think we need to be talking to students, too, in this conversation.
I had a question about I Ready. And I think in one of the slides you all said, it has high correlation with MCAS, the I Ready math. Or, and so just wondering, like, is that internal correlation work that we have done? Or is that just kind of the provider, obviously, has probably tested this against?
They've done that a couple of different times. And they provide the curriculum associates, the publisher, high correlation rate between curriculum frameworks, MCAS, and I Ready performance. Those things show a high rate of coribility. And that, you know, if you're performing well on I Ready, the likelihood is that you'll perform well on MCAS.
Is that also true for the I Ready reading as well? Great. Another question I had was just, I noticed, obviously, in the elementary piece, it talked about looking at the I Ready data, as well as kind of continuing to dive into the Spring MCAS data and kind of see kind of where those pieces are directing us in terms of places where we might need to refocus on specific skills or standards. Are there any particular target areas that y'all are seeing across grade levels where our current, you know, math curriculum that we've implemented over the last few years isn't quite getting kids the place we want? Or where we're like really excelling in a particular place in terms of skills or standards that kids work on?
So for Into Math, last year at the elementary level, it was the first year we gave the curriculum. And based on the results, we made some changes to the scope and sequence, the pacing, the main adjustments, and order did that. On the ELA side, that's part of the work of that literacy leadership team of looking at the curriculum that's been in place for a while, looking at the assessments and the outcomes of kids and making some adjustments there. So we'll be able to put those in place probably by the spring.
And just in terms of the cadence of these presentations, and I appreciate that they're gonna come to us on, you know, what, is it three times a year?
Four.
Or four times a year? When can we expect the next? And will we have assessments done by then?
It's in our annual calendar here, I can look. It's probably two months away.
Two months, okay.
Yeah.
So we may be in a place to talk about January results.
Late February, we have it down for February 28.
Okay.
But this is a topic for the next meeting with the instructional council of how do we take the last presentation and this one and try to combine them together? It's doing the work in a new way. So we're all trying to figure that out a little bit.
I asked this at a previous site council presentation, but I know the DIBELS has, obviously, parent-facing, family-facing reports on student performance that can be sent out. I'm not sure about I Ready, but is this data being shared with parents in terms of what, once this is done? Are they getting, you know, do they have access to this through Power School or through other means, whether it's DIBELS or I Ready? And if not, is that something we're looking into?
I would say it's a talking point at conferences. I don't know if we give the full parent report. Certainly, if a parent wanted to see, we provide it. But it would be a lift to send all of that out. A lot of the reading specialists, the reading interventionists type up notes, talk about their work, or go to those conferences and then present that to teachers. And teachers are very skilled. They can bring up the data in real time and show it to parents and give it to them or show them at conferences. So based on the training, they're really happy with the product. They feel comfortable communicating with parents. But certainly, if anybody wants to see the results, we'll share it with them.
I think to Garth's point, the challenge of that, too, is you miss the story when you're just sending home a paper, a piece of paper of data. And so it's really helpful, they either have those conferences or meet with teachers first to know exactly what that means, instead of just looking at some numbers. And I know that I Ready, I think, does have some summarization within it. But it is really helpful to have the teacher perspective because then they can do that comparative data, like, well, he rushed through it and we tried again. Or, you know, this is how he performs in class, even though this is presented this way. You know, testing. It, it, it gives us other data besides those specific points within ELA and math. It gives us some of that, like, learning data and how kids learn and what kind of accommodations and tools they may need within the classroom. So it's really helpful to talk it through, at least first, before getting that isolated parent form.
And the same piece is available for I Ready math. The parent report can be sent out.
I think one of the things that we need, we're talking about and will be developing over the next months and maybe years, is, is working to bring together the information for parents in a way that's digestible and understandable, meaningful. This year, we had a pilot, a Schoology pilot. People are also using Google Classroom. And we had a conversation this morning, we met for our monthly meeting with the union, and we were talking about just kind of communication and what that looks like. And we were talking about Schoology a little bit. And I think we have work to do to, to talk as a staff about how, you know, what information do parents need? You don't want to give parents too much information and every assessment and have them get worried about, oh, wait, this one was over here, and this was over here. So there needs to be some kind of interpretation, right, of the data for people to, to understand and stay engaged. So I, I think probably if you're a parent who has a kid at Tucker, and a kid at Glover, and a kid at Cunningham, and a kid at Pierce, and a kid at the high school, now, is there a parent like that? It's possible. I think it's possible. But if you had a, if you had a student in every one of our schools, I think you would see different kinds of communication. You would experience different kind of ways you're engaging with that school. So I think some of that is great. It's, it's, every school is unique, right? And, and has its own life and own culture. But we also want to have some consistency. We also want to have some consistency, I think, around. Making sure that parents are getting what they need everywhere and in a way that's, that they can understand. So. That's something that I'm thinking about as I'm reviewing data and preparing this priority report.
And also I think as a late parent, it's like you go around thinking, you know, can I, can I see the iReady, you know, my kid like? You just don't have that necessarily unless you really are watching, watching these meetings every, you know, every other week. Um, but it's something and also, I mean, frankly, the ten minute meeting, I mean. Teacher, parent, teacher, it, it, you barely touch the surface. So I really do think that the structure. In terms of how we communicate and how we're able to sort of get to where the, the struggle is for your particular student. I don't think you get to that level of information and I would love to see that restructured in some way. Um, to be able to, for, to allow parents to be able to really understand how their student is doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I completely agree. I think we get, I mean, I get a lot of emails in communication. Sometimes it feels overwhelming how much of, but again, about like generally. Things happening at the school, the things happening in the classroom, which is. Get really helpful when you get very little directly from your kid. What'd you do today? Played soccer outside with my friend. Okay, but um, so that, that's all really helpful. But again, in terms of your individualized, like, yeah, how's my kid performing? Really, you, the, the touchpoints, I think are few far between and again, how do we? Leverage these systems that can make it easier for teachers and their capacity to communicate. But I think the point you're making is totally fair and valid too of like not providing parents information. That is jerking them here and there or that is incomplete or difficult for them to understand and they're leaping to conclusions that. My kid's in the yellow, so um, like they're failing, my, the school's failing, I'm failing, like all these, all these things. So. You know, the thinking you're doing is, I think, right and just something we should continue to focus on.
Just one other thing you reminded me that um, next year we'll be looking to roll out a new elementary report card with some supporting documents to help parents. Understand what those report cards look like and that may take some of the pressure off the only ten minute conference of understanding where your kid is. So um, we delayed it a year with the switch to Power School, but we hope to roll that out next year and hopefully. Have better communication with parents as opposed to just getting that E report card and. Coming to a conference with a lot of questions and not enough time. So.
Is it, I, I have used Power School before and it looks very different from what I see as from, from a parent's standpoint. And as a teacher, I use it as literally like Google Classroom. Like it's for my course and you have all the information that the student need and parent can access it as well. So I don't know, like, is there any way to incorporate that with the Power School that we have in the public school system here?
I'm sure it's the same. Um, I don't know whether it's turning on certain modules or, or how we're using it.
Yeah, so.
You're not talking about Schoology though, right?
No, no, not Schoology. Yeah. Because there are a lot overlapping between the function between all those LMS.
Yeah.
So it, it would be nice if we can fully utilize this expensive LMS that we just recently purchased, right? And just centralize all the communication and information that parents and students need. So for example, the iReady and Dibbles things that you guys talk about. I heard my kids sometimes say, oh, I play this game at, at school and then I have no idea, like, can you play it at home too? And they may come home and say, oh, I'm in level twelve and my friend was in level eighteen already because she, he. Someone was playing at home. I was like, can you play at home also? Cause I don't know if I have the link to the, and the login information for, for the. Um, all the tools that they're using in school. So if it is all centralized inside a teacher's website. With the class schedule, for example, and all those tools, then it would be a lot easier for everybody.
I don't want to get ahead of anything, but I do recall that. You know, these kinds of topics were topics that we discussed at the bargaining table, you know. Under contract provision, um, negotiation. So. As far as, you know, what are the expectations in terms of what teachers are, what tools teachers are using, how they're using them, how often? And so on, and recognizing that different teachers use things differently and some, you know, may. Provide more information beyond what they are actually required or expected to provide. So I actually am wondering if the timing of, you know, contract negotiations will take place. When will they take place? I'm, I'm losing track, but I think it will be next year for the fall. So that's what I was hoping. That's what I was hoping you were gonna say. I'm like, I'm really. Years are a little fuzzy for me, but I, I think that um. By then, this platform will have become. More comfortable for everybody and we will actually know more about what it can do. And so therefore it kind of makes sense, I feel. To like let people get comfortable with it and then begin to perhaps like explore what would be more. Um, thorough ways to use it to communicate with parents potentially. I don't know.
Well, it might, it might not be something that's negotiated to. It might be something that is more of a. You know, like, understanding how to use it and providing some resources. Right now, teachers are using Google Classroom. They're not required. To, to do the, some of the things they do, but they.
Right.
They want to do that because it's helping students, it's helping parents.
Right, right.
So I, I think, yeah, I think learning about it, but I'd love to sit down with you and see what your, what your Power School looks like.
We, we can, we move on to Blackboard. We only used Power School for two, three years and then during the pandemic, we moved to Blackboard. So.
I'm sure Power Schools has demos on some of their.
So, um.
Well, if you knew what the modules, I mean, if it's a module issue versus like we don't have something turned on, I, I don't.
It's, you know, it's really similar to all those websites that you have out there. It's, you have tabs that you have on the left side, you can also have it on top. And you can change the, the, the looking of the page between one column, two column, three column, wherever you want it to be and you can have the calendar there, et cetera. It's just a lot more like, right in your face. It's sort of digging here and digging there, you know?
Oh, yeah, makes sense. Something else we just um. We're undertaking from the special ed perspective is actually removing our, the new IEPs or system is coming out, rolling out and we have to start using it in September twenty twenty four. So in an effort to streamline um, communication, um, we're actually moving away from frontline and into Power School's special programs. So we.
Let me know how that goes.
Yeah, it's been, um, it's been a three month process of talking it through and um, and working. But I do think ultimately having everything in one place will be really helpful for educators. And then I think to your point, that will help us expand into how we. Better communicate with families. It'll help with digital signatures for teachers, you know, given the, the privacy of students. Um, we'll be able to upload old IEPs, um, and assessments so that when teachers need an achievement test. They don't have to go to ten places to figure out where that student's um, lies in terms of their cognitive ability or anything like that. So. I think that um, we're working towards, I think, that streamlined um, tool. I just think it's, it's, it is. As someone who's new to Power School, it is an overwhelming, there's so much that you can do with it. It is overwhelming, like. Where do I go for this? It seems so simple in so many ways, but there's so, there's so much I think we can do that. I don't know if we're there yet in terms of like one step at a time.
Well, I'm happy to help if I can. I have used it for several years, so I can't like play around with it.
We're meeting with students, I think, next week or in two weeks. I think you're coming, so we can look at it then.
Oh, yes. Okay.
And just one question about Idiopel.
Idiopel?
Idiopel. Idiopel. So again, this is, it's still a, an assessment that's like in development. Cause it's still kind of being researched in terms of its, its effectiveness, things like that. But this is from. Mirrors Dibbles, but it's not the same maker. It's Dibbles or is it?
No, no.
No, okay. Any particular reason why we chose Idiopel or is it Idiopel? I don't know. Listen, I don't feel comfortable saying the name.
Idiopel sounds cool.
You're talking about like Interpol.
The, the French one. Um, yeah.
I would say it's Idiopel.
Idiopel, that's, alright.
I mean, what I, I mean, Garth might have more information than I do about it. Um. What Xena mentioned to me was they did an exhaustive search and like this was it. In terms of what they were able to find. So it sounded like there wasn't much development in French for this tool and, and. They felt like this was a good fit. In terms of the research base, I'm not sure about that. I mean, I'm sure she looked at that, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure the, the market is much smaller for stuff like that, but.
You would think there would be.
Yeah, Montreal and France.
Yeah.
Well, actually a lot of South African uh, countries teach French also.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's fair.
Well, how, how do the teachers feel about those tools that we have? Like, have you ever surveyed them and, and see what they think?
Which ones?
Like all those iReady, all those assessment tools.
The um, I, I think the, the main people that are talking to teachers are, are UNEP directors. And they're, they are working with those teams and, and problem solving and talking about, you know, is it effective? How are you finding it in terms of the amount of time the assessment takes? Is the data usable? Um, does it seem valid and reliable in terms of how you're envisioning the student's growth? So they're, they're having those conversations directly with the teachers. And making changes. So the changes that we're making are not. You know, the director's in isolation, but they're talking with their teams and, and those teams are reporting, we like this, we don't like this. And they're going and doing the research to see what's out there and coming back and continuing the conversation. So that's. I think that's one of the main things that our, our, our directors do is, is work directly with. Teachers in those specific subject areas.
But building on that, I think the teachers are very good and comfortable with giving the assessments, reviewing the results. But we're trying to help them in terms of how do I use the tools that are available to the, my path boost. It goes to that piece around uh, personalized learning, challenging those students that are operating above grade level. So that's the kind of work that we're doing in the next phase because in terms of looking at the results. We're really proficient at this piece, but the next part in terms of differentiation. And making learning available to all kids or challenged to all kids, that's the next work that we're doing with the curriculum and the instruction.
I noticed that French and English both have extra tools to help in the classroom settings. How about for um, student who learns Spanish? Is there any tools that for them to personalize learning in Spanish as well?
So uh, like a Spanish interventionist?
Like, maybe it's an app or maybe a website where the stu, like after instructions in a big group, the student can break off into small. Individualized learning platform and do their own personal learning.
Yeah, we do have some of those. I'd have to get back to you on the specifics from the director who I'm talking to.
And Idiopel is an immersion tool from Montreal.
Nice quick search, huh?
No, this is direct from Xena.
Okay.
Just texting.
It's nice to know that.
And IXL for grades four, five Spanish. IXL.
IXL.
Yeah.
It's nice to know that your team's watching, they care.
I think it means a lot.
You have tens of yours.
That you see? To process what you were saying, I was like, tens? Oh yeah, you're right.
That's probably for tens.
Ones of yours. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so Peter, is that everything under your report?
Yep.
All right, well, um. This is kind of a segue actually. So, cause the first thing under the chairs report um. Is an, our first opportunity actually to respond to something exciting, which is. A draft of the calendar for next school year. And hopefully we had the opportunity to check, to look at this. Now is our, our chance to kind of um. Look at it, ask questions, you know, engage in some discussion, um, just to frame this piece. Um, clearly we are not yet voting to approve this calendar. This is just the first draft. Um, I really want to appreciate your putting this together. Um, and. You know, I think this conversation that we can have now is. My hope is that it can just inform you all as you continue to refine the calendar with the hope that it will be coming back to us.
Bless you.
And we will be aiming to vote to approve the calendar um, in January. So. Um, with that, um, I guess I'll open it up for discussion. I, I'll acknowledge um. Definitely that one of the topics which we have been discussing. You know, both at policy subcommittee and then as a full school committee is the matter of our holidays, our days off. Um, and specifically Eid. And so that's one topic that I'm interested to talk about. I have some thoughts on that. Um, you don't have to jump straight to that if people have other questions and comments. Um, you know, other things we've um. Talked about in the past have included sort of the spacing and cadence of. The various time off for professional development. Um, some of that is, is bargained in the contract, but some of it is sort of discretionary when it is. Um. And I would like to. Note that um, we have a professional development. Day on election day, um, in the fall. Which is, I know something that some members of the community have asked for. Um, especially recognizing that several of our schools are polling places, so. I want to acknowledge and thank you for, for that. Um, what other questions? Or observations? Yeah.
Just wanted to um, actually ask Garth to share a little bit about the conversation. So Garth met with. Was it curriculum council, instructional council?
Yep.
To talk about the early release days, timing, et cetera. I think it'd be helpful to hear. What was shared there just to give context.
Thanks.
Cause the other things are kind of, like you said, they're, you know, days off and things like that or not.
Right.
There's a lot to talk about, but.
Uh, we met and they looked at last year's calendar and just gave feedback in terms of what days of the week to have those, what months. Trying to look towards continuity of instruction, having full weeks of instruction for kids. And trying to have a balance between um, how many of those days we would have that would be devoted to. The principals at the school level, department time, curriculum time, teacher collaboration. So.
Do you want to talk a little bit about how that is parsed out?
In terms of, for a calendar year, so like the different kind of competing factors in. When we look at these number of days, it's not that the district office has. Every day we can plan a new PD, but there are, there are a lot of other things that are planned on these days. So they're, it's, it's a bit complex. It is. So by contract, we have to have four of these common planning department days, which are defined as those a third, a third, a third. So there's a third for principals to do whatever they're doing for professional learning, curriculum time, and the last is teacher collaboration. So I think in an effort a ye, a year or two ago, last year, yeah. To add more time to the play, they tried the late starts, which I don't think landed well with some families. Last year we tried to do the early release piece, but. A lot of it was sandwiched on weekends and we struggled with student and staff attendance. So we tried to reduce those a little bit and try to leverage the best day of the week and then be clear on. Who's owning that time and what's being done on that time. So we can kind of build a strong PD plan going forward. Is that helpful?
Yeah. Yeah.
So that's why it's never on a Monday or Friday. That's the first thing I see. It's always on Wednesday and Thursday in the middle of the week. No one can take day off.
I mean, there's some communities that are, you know, been doing this for years that have Wednesday, the second Wednesday, second and fourth, there's always something. We're, we're not at that place, but we're trying to just have a balance between attendance and deliberative PD.
Yeah, and the contrast is, I'm just looking at this year's calendar, we have a number of Fridays. September, October, January and May.
I mean, I'll just say another sometimes jokes on Facebook on when the half days come up about, you know, why is there another half day here? But I think it's fantastic that you're creating purposeful time for teachers. Obviously, we need to then deliver on that and make it purposeful and effective. And improving instruction, that's a different thing, but the first step is putting it within a calendar and having that opportunity. Seems like you're essentially creating one a month, kind of until we hit, what, February, March? April, I guess my only question would be kind of any reasoning behind, you know, maybe you're limited to just a certain number of the year based upon the the bargaining or anything like that, but any reason why you kind of go February, March and April without a PD day?
Those are our big testing windows in terms of access, testing for EL students and MCAS. So we're trying to, you know, ramp up, have full weeks of instruction and be ready to go and try to avoid some interruptions. Sorry, there are no Fridays in there, but that's the method to the madness.
And that is a shift from this current year. So we, we have, you know, the plan this year is for early release on those months. Not the plan, but the calendar.
I mean, on some level, it also makes sense to frontload the opportunities to be, right? So that there's more opportunity to implement as the year goes on.
I mean, the year living, I mean, a lot of you live in school cycle, so you know what happens. And generally in the spring, as you hit March and April, things just seem to like start spinning very fast. And you get a little bit less from PD than you would do at the beginning of the year when people are in a different kind of mindset. So that's also a reality.
I have a question and a comment. The first question is the purple March 20th after school PT conference, that is not early release. So you're expecting the teacher to teach for the whole day and then stay after school for parent teacher conference. And I assume that is optional because from my memory, I think that is optional.
For parents.
For parents, yeah. So unless the parents request to meet with the teacher or the teacher requests to meet with the parents, they don't have to meet all the students' family. But then on November 21st and December 5th, these two days are half day. So teacher teach for the half day and then they meet with all the families. The comment is November seems very choppy. Like every week there's something off. Like, how, how are we going to sustain that stability in November when so many holidays? And then like, okay, another day off here is a little bit, and then another day off. So I, um.
I will say there's, there's an error in November where.
I was just gonna say there's an error.
21st needs to be, shouldn't be highlighted, should be 14th. So that week, that week there's two days off, the next week is a full week.
The November half day for parent teacher conference is specified as the second Thursday of November by the teacher contract. Less than exceptions.
So you have to be on that day.
14th is not discretionary.
I see, I see.
And obviously 11th is not either.
11th is actually.
Oh, really?
Only the, the only day that's specified in their contract is the second Thursday of November.
And why is that?
Yeah, I'd have to go back to 1988 or something like that to figure out with that one in the contract. I have no idea. It's, it's been there for forever. There used, there used to be a spring and the, the spring day used to be identical to the fall day. With the evening session and so forth. That was removed probably 10 years, 12 years ago. In favor of the sort of optional day. And then we we added the December day and flip flopped so that the secondary have parent teacher conferences in November and the elementary have professional development reverse in December because secondary are on more quarter system and elementary is on more trimester system. So it made more sense to switch them that way. So some of these things have sort of morphed over time. But the, the March one has traditionally been there, but it's actually not specified in contract, but needs to be there.
So the 14th has to be there. Would it make sense to move the November 5th PD day for teachers to the 15th?
It's election day, which is what she was saying, which again, I agree with you, there's a lot going on in November, but this is one of those hard months where with veterans and Thanksgiving, and I agree, election day is a great day to have PD because it's hard to operate in a building when you don't have access to your gyms.
Especially on a presidential election. The traffic in the school is huge, you know, disrupting. The gymnasium disrupts everything. You've got people wandering through the school to get into the various polling places or parking's a nightmare and all. All, a lot of reasons why you don't want to be in school. I mean, for years, we tried to say, we don't want schools to be polling places, but think about it in town, there aren't that many options. So the other option is just use that day for PD.
Yeah, a lot of districts do that.
When's the spring election, town election?
It's the last Tuesday in April.
And we have spring recess at that time.
The week after.
Week after.
So the elections.
Oh, the 29th.
But the turnout for the local election sadly doesn't hold a candle to the turnout to the fall election.
I think it's also the timing, right? Because after April vacation, like people just don't, yeah, like they forget about it.
It's like, you know. And this is the presidential election year for this calendar. It's going to be very busy. So I think it's, it's appropriate that we started this this year of all years.
Alright, well, are there any other questions or observations, I guess, before we discuss the topic of Eid? Because that was something we need to follow up on, any other topics? Okay. So I mean, how I'm thinking about this, as I said, it's just an opportunity for us to, because we have, we have our meetings in, in public. It's just an opportunity where we need to, I think, begin to, whoever has views or opinions to kind of think through where, where we're at with it, not in a binding way. We're not taking a vote on it, but it's just, hopefully can inform your thinking as you continue to work on whatever updates you might make. I, I know that one of our previous discussions on this topic, the question was raised around the need, you know, if there is a need for a policy or a procedure that would determine how we go about determining when we add a holiday or a day off. So I guess that might be the, a place for us to start. I will just, I guess, put something out there and see what other people think. I, I've thought about that and I've honestly not, I haven't been able to, I don't think we've been able to find examples or to really find, like, to think through what would that actually look like? What would that actually say? I think I know that when I was thinking along that line, like one of the ideas behind seeking a policy or would just be a way to kind of make it easier to make a decision in this type of case. But I think where I've come down on that is it's just not easy and like a pol, it's kind of needs to be a case by case situation where you, you look at the information, pros and cons, reasons to add a day or not add a day, and then you have to kind of grapple with that and make a decision. I mean, I, if anybody has ideas about like how to formulate a policy, I'm totally open to that. I just want to share, that's kind of where I'm at with it. So I haven't been able to make progress on like that in a way that feels helpful to our process. And I think where I'm at with it now therefore is just, I think we need to talk it through on this particular case. It's actually a, it's a request that's been in a pipeline of sorts for years. And I have views on it on its own merits. But do other people have ideas about a policy or a procedure? Or do, you know, are there other ways of thinking about it that do feel like that's a more logical process? And if so, like, what would that look like?
I'm just, just something to share.
Please.
I mean, I think, I think, I think as you, as you reason this and talk about it, you're going to be talking about all the, the, the pieces of this decision that are important to, to review. So whether you have a policy or not, I think the way to think about policy for this is, do you want a policy for a next time and a next time and a next time to be able to lean back on something to say, well, you know, in this case, this is what we, well, this is the process we will follow. So if you want to convey something to the community to say, if you would like to add a day, here's, here's the process you need to engage, which kind of almost becomes more like a procedure. I think it would be helpful. I think if, because this doesn't happen very frequently, it, it may be better, I think, like you're saying, to put all those policy components into the conversation and have that drive your decision making. As opposed to policy creation for this.
So I would agree that no policy is needed. However, would it serve us well that there is some documentation on how we approach this particular situation so that should all of us now be around the table again? It doesn't sort of leave the group kind of in paralysis because we don't have the institution, institutional knowledge to say, well, last time what we said was that it was by case, case by case, and we would grapple with it in its own merit. And, and we should at least leave some guidance of that sort, thinking that we're not going to indefinitely be around the table. And this is not a frequent request, but I would hope that we leave it in a better place for those who are going to be in our, in our situation in the future.
I agree with Selena, especially given the number of religious holidays that we currently acknowledge without any precedent as to how they were selected. It puts us in a precarious situation where we're basically trying to make a value statement for someone by indicating which religions do and do not meet the, the level of observance. As I.
Yeah, my only thinking on it is just maybe again, less policy, more process of just like, are there certain hurdles or hoops or documentation we want from a petitioner to say, hey, you have, you know, we need X number of signatures? Or like, have you done a poll of the student body, right? Or do you have, we have some data on group that like, again, kind of aligns with this? Like, what's the difference between this, you know, one person bringing forward a request versus this one, which is, you know, part of a larger community group? Obviously, that feels like that has more weight than just a single individual coming in, but is that the type of like, the things we are considering? I think essentially to Selena's point, to say like, you know, what, what are the things we're kind of hoping to get either from the petitioner that we ourselves will gather? And then those are the things we are saying we're, we're essentially weighing. And then again, to Selena's point, like the future people might say, well, that was a stupid process and throw it away, but at least they have that to say, like, this is how we've done that historically.
I think also like if having a process is helpful because I think if it, if you get questioned on it down the road, right? Like somebody says, hey, how come, how did that happen? How come my holiday wasn't, I didn't get one? You know, you have something to kind of fall back on because we've had examples recently, like, you know, that we've kind of had to track, you know, backtrack on that. So I think having some sort of process that we follow and leave behind would be great for future committee members.
I agree with what everyone has said. But it kind of remind me of what happened with the warrant. According to what was presented, the warrant article number six, it was brought by one resident in the area. And it was made into the warrant. So with this, someone as a, representing the whole group come to us, presenting all those data and information to support the claim. And we, it seems like there has to be something officially documented so that we all agree on what the process should be.
Well, in that case, I mean, I think my understanding, how that works for town meeting, like a citizen can put forward a petition or submit a, an article, but it has to be submitted to, in this case, the select board who decided to, right? I mean.
A citizen can put something forward to the select board and they can choose to put it on the warrant. Or you can have a citizen's petition signed by 10 cit, 10 citizens for the spring and 100 for the fall for special town meetings. And then it goes on the warrant whether the select board wants it or not. So, I mean, there are, there are different, but there is, one person can do it with the, with the acceptance of the select board or 10 people, for instance, for a May town meeting can just make, make it be on the warrant.
So there is a process with the warrant committee.
Right.
So we should have one.
Well, right. So, okay, thank you all because your help, you, you in a short time, you just kind of, you helped me break through a, like a free, a freeze I was having. If we come up with a process, it's really to document hopefully a version of what we've already done, what we're in the process of doing. Not to invent some other new process that we haven't thought of yet. I think that's where I was like feeling stuck. What would that entail? But this is, we can document the steps for a member of the community to take if they would like to do what in this particular case Milton Muscle Neighbors has done. Okay. Maybe we can work on drafting something like that to consider at policy.
Yeah.
So I guess then, knowing that that's something that we can do, that I think we, for this, you know, point in time, we should move on to a little bit of a discussion about the particular choice of Eid in this case as we look ahead to next year. As I said, I have, I've thought a lot about it. I have some ideas, but I don't need to go first if other people want to share, if you have thoughts. Obviously, we're looking at a calendar draft. Obviously, we're looking at a calendar draft that doesn't include a day off for Eid. So a question for us is, are, are we comfortable with that? Or as individuals in the conversation, are we hoping for a change whereby we added it?
So in the last conversation we had about this, I think there were some questions and next steps that were asked. And I don't know if sort of those next steps were taken. I think some of it was speaking to neighboring districts to sort of just get a sense of what their deliberation process was. Doesn't mean we would land in the same place, but I think it was for those of us who need information to make decisions, you know, like, in a certain way, and that's me, I'm gonna speak from the I perspective. Sort of I had asked for that um, to be done. And then also um, we had, we were gonna look at, I believe, in terms of the calendar and if there was wiggle room to add another day off. And if so, where would we, you know, sort of, that was another consideration, right? And I'm not remembering what others, but I do feel like there were next steps and I just don't recall us sort of talking about those items.
So, yeah, I can own the fact that I did not do the research with other dis- to reach out to other districts to ask about the process. I did not do that. I'm sorry, that probably was something I was supposed to do.
No, I think we talked about delegating it to someone on staff.
I put some documentation that I found, like, you know, while I was initially researching, like, I think it was like, like.
Of calendars in the previous folder.
Yes, but I think like having, understanding what the wiggle room is on our calendar would be helpful. And are we proactive and add a couple, you know, look at all the holidays and make sure that, you know, the they're represented? Or do we just, is it like, oh, we can only add one day or we can't add any days? You know, I think like, understanding that, like, what's? And what is the process? Do we, are we proactive and just look at it holistically and say, okay, it's missing these days that it should be fair to add? And how does that work? Or do we just do it on a case by case?
And see, my, my comment was not necessarily of taking a survey of sort of where we, which days we honor and which not. But it's more about in terms of the calendar year. If we add one more day off, what in, what's the implication of that in terms of the days that we need to have? In the schools? And so that's just sort of my, that's where I wanted to sort of get us.
Looking at this calendar, I mean, what we know is that if we add a day off and we don't remove another day off, all we're doing is extending the school day by one day. We learned we are not able to um, put school on August thirtieth, the Friday before Labor Day. Uh, because at this point in time, that's in the contract. Potentially, we could revisit that in future, but not for this year. The, there are other days, November twenty seventh, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, we have as a day off. We don't need to have that as a day off, not everybody has that as a day off. I mean, that's, I think these kinds of things are decisions we make together. You know, you come up with calendars and we approve it or don't approve it as a school committee. So um, looking at this calendar, you know, with the timing of Juneteenth and the start of the school based on Labor Day. You know, as of right now, the last day of school is June eighteenth, half day of a Wednesday with no snow days. If you added a day off, it would be, the Friday would be the last day of school, the day after Juneteenth.
And with snow days.
It could potentially extend into the following week.
So we could say that we want to go through the twentieth. And that doesn't have implications from a teacher's contract, from a con-
There's no end date on the teacher's contract saying, school must end by.
So we would have that.
June thirtieth.
There is a requirement that we get so many days in. One eighty? So long as we hit that number.
Students have to be in a hundred and eighty days and then there's the hour count. Nine hundred and nine ninety hours during the year of instruction.
And even when I look at December, I think I'm looking at this year's calendar. December twenty second, I'd love for my children to be here. They will be home with me. So we do have that extended Christmas winter break in twenty two. I was gonna say that if you look at twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, it's almost two weeks off. Because of when the holidays land.
You mean because we're not going to school on Monday, the twenty third?
Right, so we have the twenty third, so depending, and this is, as long as I have been alive, there is that year when Christmas and New Year's land in the middle of the weekend, everybody gets two weeks. That's a lot of childcare. I don't want to diminish the holiday, but the idea is that extending it one day at the end of the school year or taking the twenty second or twenty third, like, one of those days off of the winter break, those shouldn't be the reason why we don't acknowledge um, a religious holiday. That's, I wouldn't make that case.
No, I just think it's, I, yeah, and it's not about sort of that being the decision maker, making, uh, you know, criterion. It, it's really just about looking at where the flexibility is and our ability to add, right, without taking away um, necessarily. And it sounds to me like we're saying we could, we do have that flexibility. So taking that as a barrier to making this decision, what other factors would we consider? Uh, you know, in terms of adding this additional important holiday for a subset of our community. Where I think we've heard a very compelling case as to why it should be added. And I think based on that, I would say, you know, the equitable thing to do would be that. Given the values and sort of what we put out there as the district we want to be.
I agree, and I think the only other consideration I would juxtapose against this is the, if one person asks, is that enough? That's the other extreme of this. I wish I had an easy answer. I'm sure that we can come to something that's better than nothing. But I do think it's important that we acknowledge this holiday, that a, a large section of our community, and it could be small. It's, it's the right thing to do.
I've been thinking a lot about um, something that Serene Frank raised, which was the positioning of Islam in relation to Christianity and Judaism. The two religions that we currently recognize with Eid off and the fact that, you know, these are the three Abrahamic religions. They are the three largest, well, Islam, Christianity and Islam are the two largest, you know, world religions. And at a certain point, if you're recognizing two and not the third, that really isn't, that is exclusive. So I do agree that I feel it is something that should be recognized with a day off. As you've both said, I also was really thinking, and now, since you all helped me through my like block around the policy question, procedure question, like, I think I was actually thinking about a rat, the rationale around that this has been a years-long conversation, have taken place. You know, at this point across like gen- three generations of the school committee that we've been here. That, you know, this began, for me at least, like, very soon after we joined the school committee. That this was first raised. And so it has been a very thoughtful and deliberate process where there's been um, I think, a, a transparent conversation that has unfolded over time. There has been um, I would say, just a very like thoughtful and patient and persistent approach um, from this group within our community that um, has helped us stay focused on this question. And that did initially result in a compromise, you know, that we've had in place for the past couple of years. So I think that's also important. This wasn't like a change that occurred overnight if we make this change. It was something that we gradually kind of um, grew into. And then, you know, so those, that's really my reasoning why I do agree I would like to see us add the day. And I, I believe what we'd be looking at would be a day in March.
And it would change, right?
It would change year by year based on. Yeah, so, but my, the point is that I think this does provide a roadmap for future requests, if there are any, um, that would need to engage in a similarly thorough, deliberate process of communication, deliberation through that. I did want to say, you know, to people who, who are, you know, concerned first and foremost about the length of our school year, the number of days off that we have. In the research of districts, you know, it and actually a colleague I, I met at the um, MASC conference shared a totally different approach, which is that they got rid of all the holidays. And they have school on all the religious holidays. And that is a different way to go, where it's like you just encourage anyone to take an excused absence on a holiday they're celebrating, whether that be a Jewish High Holiday, Rosh Hashanah Yom Kippur, or Good Friday.
Or Christmas.
There's still, they still have a winter break.
Like, they got rid of that. I'm glad I asked, because people were gonna laugh like, really?
But that's uh, that's like the winter break. I think the same way February break is President's Day and Spring Break is Patriots' Day, Winter Break. But this, the point is, there's nothing stopping us. Like, if we solve the equity issue we currently have across these religions, which are comparable, you know, the three of them, then we can always come back later and engage in a lengthier process with Milton Interfaith Clergy Association, perhaps, definitely would need to be involved, you know, to think about, well, are we, you know, continuing with all of these as days off? I mean, I'm not advocating for that, but I'm just trying to make the point that we could, like, that is a much la- larger discussion. And I think this is a short-term solution to a problem that we have that has been pointed out to us, which, you know, we could solve by adding the day off. And even if we know that means we might be going into the week of June twenty third.
So are we, is the question, are we prepared to make the recommendation that the next iteration of the calendar be on there? Or do we want to investigate, as we discussed previously? Is there any sample lang- language around a policy, even if it's just to say, you know, we get a petition, whatever that is? I, I don't want one to preclude this from doing the other. But it would be so nice if we did have something in writing to coincide with this decision.
Well, I mean, I think we're not making a decision right now, we're just having a discussion to inform you all. So I feel like they need to move forward on parallel paths. Like, we have a policy meeting next week. You know, we, this could be on our agenda next week. Conceivably, we could have a first reading of a policy on December twentieth. But, you know.
Didn't we just say we weren't gonna have a policy? It's more like a procedure, right? Procedure, just, I just want to make sure that we're.
I don't, it, it can come through the policy subcommittee, but I don't, I guess what I'm trying to say is I don't want that to hold up. I think we should, I mean, anybody who hasn't, three of us have just said that we are in favor of adding. Again, this is not a binding, we're not voting on this, this is not, so not everybody has to weigh in on it. But if, does anybody have anything more to add? As far as your current like thinking or opinion on this, like, to add to what's already been said?
Mine was just a question, do we want to wait until we actually have the procedure before we make this formal recommendation to the district staff to add this to the calendar? It's not a vote, but I'd love to hear other people's thoughts.
I don't think it'll be a recommendation, I think it would be a um, like.
We could just say do it.
It's a statement, because you're gonna make, you're gonna take action to do it and then it's done. I mean, I, we're not going to maybe put it in and maybe not, once you make that.
There's also a decision you have to make, because Eid in twenty twenty five is a Sunday. So what is the?
It looks like it's a two-day.
It starts on Saturday night and ends on Sunday. So the question is, in twenty twenty five. So the question is, what happens when it's on a, on a weekend? Because it moves up about ten to eleven days each year. So, I mean, eventually it'd be in the fall, summer, I mean, it wraps all the way around. But the question is, you know, like other holidays, when it, when it occurs on a Sunday, what do you do?
Do you honor it on a Monday?
You honor it on a Monday.
We should ask.
And that's not a question personally I would know how to answer. I think that's a question we should be asking.
The Milton Muslim Neighbors, I think we should, I think that's one thing.
I think that's a great point.
Okay, so Beau and Mark and Anna, if, you know, you'll still be able to at, chime in if you want. But to your question, Bev, I guess if, if, if where we need to end up is making a formal statement slash recommendation and this is something that we need to make, you know, make a motion, do we need to make, do we need to make a vote to formally ask you to add a day off? So that would be something, we're having this discussion now, would that be on the twentieth? We have a motion where we need to at, formally vote on it. And at that same time, we could be voting on a procedure, language of a procedure. I mean, I think we have the ingredients here, it's just a question of we need to like, move it, move it forward, right?
I think we have time, I, I don't think it has to happen on the twentieth, it could happen in January too. And I, I guess I wouldn't try to rush it for the next meeting. I know there was a statement about getting information, I could, I can do that between this meeting and next meeting. In terms of, we were talking about process, right? That other districts have used, what kinds of things have they looked at in their decision-making process? Were they guided by a procedure or policy?
I think that would be helpful.
You know, did, did they use any kind of metric around? How many, what religion, right? Like, all those kinds of questions that we have.
And in the absence of it, maybe it is simply a, maybe it's Joe or us saying, look, if, if we have a ton, twenty people in the community sign a petition, ask me, whatever it is, whatever that procedure is, that we just document it. I don't want it to be a hurdle, because I don't think this is that complicated. But just the consistency, so we don't get the one vote change. That's my fear.
But, well, but I'm also, I want to also caution us around the, I also don't want to lay out a process where if someone follows these steps, they get a day off.
Right, no, but, but you can add the.
It has to remain like a case by case.
Then we just need to say that.
Deliberation based on the information available, you know.
Yeah, and I think where you could be very clear about the process of it's that it would have to meet all of these different criteria in order for it to become ad conversation. I think that's, that's, you know, something that we can be very clear in that language. And perhaps in those conversations with those other districts, it would be of like, how do they treat it? If it falls on a Sunday, I'm wondering if they've been, I'm sure they've thought about it, or maybe not, no, you know, who knows? But that I think would be an interesting, but also we could talk to, you know, our, our neighbors and, and get their guidance as well. But I do think we don't need to write all of that down before we actually make a statement that's, you know, and that says that in the twenty twenty four, twenty five. That's, you know, and that says that in the twenty twenty four, twenty five school year, we're gonna make sure that it's a day off. And it would be mon, you know, March thirty first in this, in the twenty four, twenty five school year.
Well, I'm glad we had the discussion.
Just uh looked up, looking up Hopkinton's calendar for next year, which they already have now. And they were one of the articles that you shared that adopted it. They don't appear to have Eid on their calendar for next year. Maybe because of the point you brought up, they still have obviously Lunar New Year Day off, uh, which was another one and Diwali. Which were two other ones that they added.
They had Lunar New Year Day off?
They added Lunar New Year and Diwali. They added Diwali and then they added Lunar New Year and Eid together uh the following year.
Like, should we look at all the holidays that makes sense? Like, look at it through an equity lens and make sure that the community is represented. And should we be proactive or should we wait for somebody to come to us?
That's a good point.
And say it, you know, if we have the flexibility or if that's an issue, we could also look at the opposite, which is. Removing all days off, you know, so.
Either way, that's a, that's a longer term conversation. Like, I think. You know, I, I do think it's important to respond to this particular request, sort of. As its own request, just because it is, you know. It's been before us, um, but that's not stopping us from having that longer conversation. We just probably don't have time for that. For this next year because of the timeline to need to approve the calendar and we're so much further along with this conversation about Eid. But that's something we could be looking at.
For next.
For next year, yeah.
What's your timeline again? What's your deadline?
January, January third is when we're supposed to be voting.
That's what we have it on now, but I, it can get kicked down, down a little bit further.
I was gonna say, I just put it all in there and be done. I just think that, to your point, we're creating a litmus test that's arbitrary.
But it's not arbitrary in the, in the sense of Islam in relation to Christianity and Judaism. Like in relation that those three religions are, are um considered. Sort of in a category together. And.
And Diwali, there's a billion Indians on planet Earth. My math might be wrong, but there's a lot.
Okay, let me back up and say, I'm not trying to say they're, they're more important or something like that, but they're, they are um. They, they all branch from the same tradition, I guess is what I'm trying to say. And so you're recognizing like two of the three branches. I don't wanna go down this path. I'm not a theologian, so I'm not going to like try to pretend that I know about it. But like. I just. Am mindful that that was a rationale that was like core to the request. I, I think when, if we can do it, we can have that convert, we can add three. We can look at what that would involve, you know, to add the three days off. In one fell swoop, but I do worry that that undermines our, then if what we're trying to do is document the process. That asks a commu-, you know, asks members of the community to kind of engage with the school committee in a certain way. Then we would be saying. We would be going ahead and like being proactive, which is good in a way, but it's also. Means that for this one holiday, we've been in this year's long process for these other two holidays. We're just kind of.
I think the difference is we were reacting to a specific request and I think, thank you for looking at Hopkinton, both of you. It's with that level of information, it's made me realize that we can be thoughtful and proactive. It shouldn't take a community to put together a petition to acknowledge something that in our learning. Is, is actually important. There's, these are both um the Lunar New Year and Diwali are significant holidays. And as our community becomes more diverse, I think eventually we're gonna see more petitions. We said we weren't going to wait to have a procedure in place to acknowledge Eid. Do we need to do that for the other two? Or do we think it would be controversial to acknowledge all three?
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I obviously wasn't around for the, the lengthy process necessarily, but I think what we're doing now is. Taking the opportunity to assess, right, a, a practice we have and so. The idea of potentially adding more than one or removing some and not, not adding any like is just, is part of the process so that. Has been created by this petition for us to kind of internally discuss. I, I personally struggle a little bit with the idea of adding a singular holiday. When, you know, there are other holidays that, you know, other communities, when they've gone through this process. Have kind of pretty typically added along with it in order to be like, if our idea is to be inclusive. I personally struggle with the idea of being inclusive to these particular types of religious. You know, observances and, and just because, you know, Muslim religious tradition. Is more connected to the Christian religious tradition, which is predominant within uh our, you know. Historical culture of the United States or um isn't particularly a strong reason for me personally. That we should add it. I think it's a stronger reason for me, just that we have members of our community who celebrate this and we want to recognize. And we want to have, you know, we want them to feel valued and seen within our community, like that resonates very strongly with me. But we have many people, um, you know, outside of that. Again, Lunar New Year, I, I. You know, we have a larger Chinese population within the state of Massachusetts at least. Than almost any other, um, uh, any other geographic destination. And so like, you know, over two billion people celebrate Lunar New Year, which is even about the same as. Folks who celebrate Eid worldwide. So like we have these other communities that we serve. And again, you know, it's over a billion for Diwali. So like these are, you know. Huge, huge numbers that are all like very big populations, like is, maybe that's the metric we're trying to use is these are really big populations.
And we're acknowledging our diversity and we're celebrating it by giving it its equal due. I think that it shows that Milton is moving in the right direction. We're, it's very interesting that in the almost fifteen years I've lived here. Whatever the math is, we are seeing people that we haven't seen before. And I think our capacity to acknowledge their celebrations is wonderful. We're talking about them in school. At the Tucker School, we had a teacher explain the holiday Diwali to our students and they celebrated it with her. Wouldn't it be nice to show our community that it's, there is a world that's beyond the Judeo-Christian tradition? And um we want to expose them to it and acknowledge their holidays with equal weight.
I think that's one problem that raised um in uh Celine's presentation is that. If, if the student have a teacher who is um in certain cultural group. And willing to share that in the classroom, then they will learn about it. Or if there's a parent who wanted to come in and share about, like for my case Lunar New Year, then the. Then my kids' classes will hear about Lunar New Year, but outside of that is not a common curriculum. That all the stu-, all the student will learn about. So when they get into middle school melting together. Some of them have exposure with diversity or more diverse understanding of the world. But some of them are not, so how are we going to balance that? I think is the, the underlying thing, the ideal way of acknowledging any kind of. Diversity of cultures and religions is, should be taught in the classroom. It should be in a, you know, curriculum. And it's not just like, oh, here is someone who can pull the string and here is someone who can present something, you know. It's very superficial to me to just have a day off because it's just a day off. But I understand how significant it is to have it recognized on official calendar.
But one doesn't preclude us from the other. He's the superintendent, he's the curriculum instructor. We can literally talk about what does it look like system wide, but the issue of today is. Are we the, in a position to acknowledge that there are three additional holidays? That we have community members that celebrate and do we need a procedure? Do we need a petition? Do we need the, you know, the Indian Milton neighbors community? Or, you know, another community to have to bring it to our attention or can we acknowledge this and. Use this calendar as an opportunity. I'm not, the good thing is Peter said we don't have January third is this hard stop. By which we make this call, but I would love for us to seriously consider that. Not the deadline, but the three days, sorry.
And so practically speaking, that would, that would have a um. The last day of school would be um June twenty fifth with no snow days. Which would mean we would be able to have only two snow days.
I don't have the calendar for them because my screen is this screen.
Or to your point earlier, you know, is it, do, do we need December twenty second?
Well, but we don't have December twenty second, uh, December twenty third.
No, I'm saying in other words, it's gonna move every year. It's, I'm just saying, we have almost two weeks off in the twenty four, twenty five school year. For which my daughter will have aged out of the program for which she could be in school and occupied. I don't think, I don't think extending the school year should be the reason why we don't acknowledge these holidays. Especially if we have some opportunity to be, to revisit what we have, so.
The only issue with your point about extending, but first off, you don't know if it'd be three days. We should find out if Eid is on a Sunday, whether there. That's a, whether you do the Monday or not, or whether that's just unheard of in their calendar. But that's something we should look at. When you get into the, having only two days left at the end of the year for snow days. You do run the risk. I mean, granted, global warming and all hasn't snowed here a lot in the last couple of years.
Just thinking the same thing.
If, but we've had it that way and then if you get more than two snow days, you are canceling part of April vacation. Cause at that point, that's your only option. Unless you think you're, you know, the, we, teacher's contract doesn't allow us to bring them in on Saturdays. So um you, you, you're basically canceling April, a day of April vacation or more and that's a whole different set of problems. Once, you know, you, you hit that third snow day in March or something like this, you have very little flexibility, so.
I think it, I, I will just say personally, I think it would be very hard to add three full days without taking away other days. So I think at that point, we are coming to school the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, the day before Thanksgiving. We're coming, we're gonna have to. Work out in the future how we come to school the Friday before Labor Day. I mean, I don't know. I just, to me, I think we have to find like at least. That's just my instinct on it is that three is a lot to add without. Like you're, I think it's what you're saying. It's finding other days within. That we currently take off and maybe we don't need to take those days off. Like, I, I just. I'm just, um.
I'm wondering what holidays.
For Thanksgiving, I believe is a holiday in the Afspie calendar. The Afspie, uh custodians and food service workers, I believe. At very least, it's a half day.
So.
For Thanksgiving is.
So please, okay, so don't take me literally on these, these comments that I'm making. My point is, I think we need to roll our first sleeves. And do a little bit more work to be creative with it. I, I think it would be challenging to just. You know, in one fell swoop, lengthen the school year by three days and I'm not saying it's not justified. You know, I, 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 um, you, you've, you've made, several of you have made very persuasive arguments. I agree with. You know, it, on principle, then it's a question of matching that with like the practical reality for. Teachers.
Just so you're aware, this is an issue that has been discussed with the teachers because it arose not from either of these holidays, but from um. Eastern Orthodox Good Friday.
I know Good Friday, yeah.
Which is not the same day as.
Regular Good Friday.
And it's also listed here, so that's a question is if we're adding.
Teacher, there's language in the teacher's contract that if they, if um, they have a religious holiday on a day, they can use. Uh, I think it's one of their sick days or something and, and take that day off as, as a result. I mean, in state employ-, or Massachusetts state employees, um, they're entitled to a day off on a, a day that they. deem a religious holiday, a day with pay. Um, that's actually in the mass law for state employees, not, not affecting us. But, so I mean, there has been some discussion around this before, but, but not the, not in the case of days off.
And, and, and I think in our policy, when we updated it, we asked that absences be excused absences for. Students celebrating a religious or cultural holiday that is not honored with a day off in the calendar. So I think that's something that we took care of a couple of years ago, but. Okay, so obviously we're gonna continue to need to have this conversation. I. Are, at the end of the meeting tonight, I know we have a lot still other important things to discuss. Are we, um. We will need to decide like what, what are we doing to add, like. I do think we need to keep this on our agenda. In the fu- future meetings to, I don't wanna just let it.
Well, I, just from a timeline perspective, right, if part of the impetus for this is the petition for Eid. To me, a pretty important point is figuring out, is there even a date that would fall on a school day? To celebrate in the next school calendar, cause if it is on a Sunday. And it is not the type of day that then would have like a, I mean, I assume we could make a date observed, uh, but if that is not. Particularly meaningful or really that helpful um from a religious standpoint. And like a, you know, cultural responsiveness standpoint, then. That kind of gives us a lot more running room because it wouldn't be on the calendar anyways, even if we voted today to put it on.
No, uh, in two thousand twenty six, it's going to be on Friday, Friday, March twentieth.
Jumped forward about ten to eleven days each year.
You're saying it's, yeah, on the thirtieth March.
It starts on the thirtieth and ends on the thirtieth, right?
Starts on the Saturday night.
I mean, as we talked about, I can gather data from other districts to see kind of in terms of process. You know, the kind of things that they've thought about and considered.
I mean, it's, it's, it's recognized, it goes through sundown on March thirty first, so it's a Monday of twenty twenty five.
That's what it's in here.
Begins on sundown of the Sunday, the thirtieth and, and sundown of March thirty first, the Monday, so. It would be a, the Monday would be the day off if we did that. For next year, but thank you, Peter, I mean, for offering to do that. I, is that something? You might be able, like, well, you don't have to commit to anything, but. If you're able to do that by the next meeting, that will help us move it forward, I think, I guess.
And getting to this point of the last day of school, because looking at Hopkinton's calendar. Despite the fact that they, you know, they have added all these other holidays. Theirs last day is still slated for the eighteenth of June and uh snow uh makeup days. On the twentieth, um, and then they, they leave the twenty third through the twenty sixth of. In case they need them, so just, I think in those conversations, just to figure that, that out. I think it's a. I think it's a, it would be good for us to understand how they, how are they making up.
Some people can start earlier.
They start the same time. So I just don't know how. Anyway, I think it would be interesting.
Like they have an early dismissal on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Just for you. To try to understand.
So that's what I'm talking about. We would need to make, like, I feel like we would need to make sacrifices in other areas. Or at least be open to that, you know, and it would be about helping the community understand the. Reason why this is the right thing to do. And some people will really not appreciate it. We can keep talking.
No, but I also think that it's just like we have a responsibility around educating about our curriculum decisions and. Many of the things that we do. This, I think it's worth it to acknowledge. The members of our community. It's worth, it's worth the endeavor.
Okay, well, I really appreciate this thoughtful discussion. I know it took some time, but I thank you all for. What you've contributed to it. The other part under the chair's report. We do need to discuss the Article Six. The town. The warrant for the special town meeting, which as we all know, started on Monday, will continue on next Monday and Tuesday, probably Tuesday. And, and the reason for us to talk about this is really. Just because as you can see from reading the article, obviously it pertains to elected boards in town. We are one of those boards. And I think I do not know, but I would like to be prepared to. Provide a sort of opinion, I guess. If asked, you know, where the school committee stands. I learned that, for example, the library trustees. Had a conversation about this in order to decide as a group where they came down on it, and that's all I would like. For us to be able to do, which is why we're gonna vote on this. But I'm, you know, you've read the article. I included the letter that was distributed at town meeting, which was to town meeting members. Really just because it provided some additional explanation from the member of the community who submitted the article to the select board. So I just wanna open up and see what questions or thinking you all have. To help us ultimately come to a vote on, you know, where we stand on this. Whether we support the warrant committee's recommendation to send this article back for further study. Or whether we support. The article itself as written, which doesn't directly affect us because obviously we're already recording our meetings. The exception to that is when we have a retreat. Retreats are still able to occur offsite and, and not be recorded. You know, our regular meetings, however, are obviously all recorded. This is really just, it's, it's, it's a question of. Making that consistent across the boards in town. So I'll stop there. What do you all think? Or should we make a motion? And I, I'll make a motion and then we can have discussion and then. Whenever anyone's ready to vote, we can do that. I think where I came down on the wording for this was. To make a motion to, based on how it's written in the warrant. To make a motion to support the warrant committee's recommendation to refer back to the select board. Is there a second?
Second for the purpose of discussion? I can jump in. So, yeah, I think my, when I originally saw this, one of my concerns from. Our perspective is just the retreats, right? That's the one place. I think we've done them. It says if it's a retreat, if it's not on town of Milton property. Which we've done retreats on town of Milton property. So like those. I guess by this would need to be recorded. So in the future, if we were to do the retreats. We would need to make sure we all bunk at Peter's place. So, I mean, that might just be a logistical thing. I. Do enjoy those retreats as it relates to, you know, us not making decisions, but rather figuring out how we are working. Interpersonally and productively to, to be more productive within these settings. So that was one. I am. Generally in favor of like all boards showing. I, I don't quite have the full context of the. Concerns the Board of Health and the Board of the Cemetery have. And, you know, hopefully they will present a town meeting and maybe that will give us different clarity. But not quite knowing like exactly why they might have concerns about recording. I'm generally in favor of. Public bodies recording and presenting that to their elected constituents and members of the town who are interested in viewing those with their free time. And then I guess the last piece is the, the warrant committee's decision to send it back. Because of not including the subcommittees, I really agree with that. I'm more inclined to side with the idea of like, this is. At least a step forward and then, you know, in the future, we could take another step forward. One doesn't. Statement you made earlier, one doesn't necessarily preclude the other. So stopping it. In my mind, you know, we could have a different proposal for the May town meeting that. Adds something else. I don't know if I'd fully approve, support all subcommittees. That's a lot. I will say that maybe this is more a finance committee piece is within the warrant articles conversation, warrant committee's conversation, they mentioned. Like, well, maybe we could just add, they were particularly interested in finance committee meetings. Which I understand, right? Town money is, is of particular interest to, to certain folks. And they said, well, maybe we could just ask them nicely to do it. So, you know, it, it doesn't seem to me like that'd be a huge logistical hurdle since most of those things are on, on Zooms that we could. Just click record and then email off, but. I don't necessarily think we need to tank an entire article just because of that. So I think I'd lean in favor of supporting it. That's my very long-winded way of saying that, so I apologize.
You support it going back to the select board?
Sorry, no. So I think I'd not support the motion to send it back to the select board. So that it could move forward with a vote and then I'd support a motion to approve the warrant.
So I guess my question is logistically, how do you record all? I know subcommittee meetings are not included in here, but how, if we were to include them, how would that happen? If they weren't on Zoom.
You'd have to be in here and have a staff, right, to record it?
Zoom is not permanent. I mean, it's only been authorized through another year and a half. I mean, that's a pact of the legislature to allow Zoom meetings.
I mean, I have just, can I say? I mean, I have heard from. That capacity is an issue in terms of being able to record. All these, if we didn't have Zoom or Google Meet as an option to press record, like you could sit down at a meeting and, you know, on your laptop. But if it fell to. The town to do all that, but right now, we currently don't have the capacity to do that.
They don't have the capacity to do the. I'm just talking about Board of Health and trustees at the cemetery.
I don't think they have the capacity to do all of those meetings because so many of them conflict on different nights. I, I think even if you would just add it in the main meetings of all the different boards. I think Milton Public Access would have trouble. Doing it.
We'd have to add staff and the town would have to pay for it.
Town didn't pay for Milton Access staff.
But they'd have to get the money from somewhere.
They would maybe charge the town to.
So then, subcommittees could never, I mean, if we, it's not like it could be recorded in the future. We would have to really expand the staff to make sure that.
If Zoom went away.
We'd have to schedule this room so that we could all could be in here at different times for all of our committee meetings.
It also includes audio and or video.
Have to be somebody from Milton Access recording, right? It's not, or, like, I don't know, like. You can't just randomly have your phone up and record either.
Maybe that's.
You have to figure something, yeah. Or I think one of the proposals of the warrant committee was just buy a bunch of owls. People could take. Yeah, I thought, I thought, well, I thought at the select board meeting, it had been shared that Milton Access TV. Thought that the initial proposal of the article was feasible. For them to, to fulfill that the concern came with the addition. Of the subcommittees. That, that was a step too far.
And isn't all the meetings posted online? Like the agenda and the meeting time and meeting methods are all posed online? So if. The residents are very concerned about certain issue, they should attend it. The same as we all attend the meetings. If we can in person, right? And also the. What's that? The minutes are also approved at the next meeting and it was going to go online as well. So. We wanted to know about what is being discussed and what's decision being made at the meeting is very transparent.
But I think as I read this article, it's going from sort of a point of. Why some elected boards are recorded and some not. And I think that's a fair. Question to put forward. And it should be probably, you know, standard expectation and requirement. That if we are being recorded in every single one of our committee meetings. We would expect the same thing from all the other elected bodies. As I read it, obviously there's logistical things in terms of the actual implementation. But it seems to me that it would be fair. So I guess as written, I wouldn't necessarily say it needs to go for further study. You know, if we wanted to get into the subcommittee stuff, that's a different. It's a different one. Because I think it does raise all kinds of questions of capacity. But I think from, if, if one body is expected to do that, the, the rest should be too.
And Belle, just to your point, I'll say like, I, I do not attend select board meetings. I very much enjoy the ability to watch them at a later date in time when I'm able to and learn about what's going on. Same for. Warrant committee and I'm sure same for, you know, people who are not up right now watching us, but maybe at a later date, wanna use up their time for that. Yeah, so, and then the meeting minutes is, is fair, but it is somewhat dependent upon how. Well, somebody's willing to put those together, how much detail they're willing to provide. There's. Wide discrepancy in quality of meeting minutes or detail of meeting minutes, I should say at least. It's my personal feelings.
So with like, for instance, like. I mean, I don't, I don't know what the. Trustees of the cemetery, like, I'm not sure, like, their topics are, but like, for instance, like Board of Health, I'm just asking, like, would there be like. Personal health stuff that comes up that, you know, are there privacy issues? I'm just curious about those.
If there are. I, I also do not know, but if there are privacy issues, then they should be using executive sessions to have those discussions. I would think anyway. And executive sessions are not recorded under this article. So. I think that is important to me. I mean, that's important to me to. It makes sure to say that.
So then I guess it would, like, for them, they would have to kind of post that it's gonna be an executive session. If they know the topic in advance, but like not, okay.
Yeah, or if they. I mean, it may require, so any board that isn't currently used to being recorded. I could understand they might need to make, you know, like, make a shift where they. Kind of run their meetings in a careful way that ensures that information that should not be. Put out in the public is something that's reserved, reserved for an executive session. And at that point, the recording stops. So I, I guess every board would need to kind of navigate that for themselves. Is there any further discussion? I think, I, I think that actually, we have a motion on the table. To support the warrant committee's recommendation to refer back. I actually think there are two layers to what we need to do right now. Big, I do think we should, I mean, because there, we should vote on whether we support that recommendation to refer back. And then depending on how that turns out for us as a group. We may need to take a second vote on the article itself. Because I do think that is what I, if, if we are asked what we think about it. We should be ready to kind of say both things. So is there any further discussion on, on this? All right, so we have the motion on the table. To support the warrant committee's recommendation to refer it back. For the purpose of. Revising the article to include subcommittees among other things. That's the motion on the table. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. So in that case, I'd make a next motion to recommend that the town approve. Article six as written. Is there any further discussion of that? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I thought the second was for the discussion, sorry. I just would like to actually hear before I make a decision, like on Monday, you know, just, or whenever it comes up, Monday or Tuesday. Just to kind of get from the different departments, like as to why they don't, you know, curious. So. I would like to abstain for now.
Okay, that's fair. Any other discussion?
So if we support this article. That means our subcommittee meetings are not recorded.
Correct.
And our retreats are not required to record it.
But so. Retreats, if they took, if they were not on town property, if it was a summer, the summer, you know, we would have to work that out. But I think it's. You know, these meetings continue to be recorded. Our subcommittee meetings are not recorded. Our executive sessions are not recorded. Our retreat meetings would be recorded if they were taking place in this room.
Okay. And then it also requires the other boards that were elected to have their meetings recorded as well.
Correct.
Okay, have a seat for that.
Okay, so. Okay, so we'll start fresh. We, you seconded the motion.
I did.
Okay, so all in favor of the motion to recommend that the, you know, basically in support of Article six? All in favor of that? Okay, so then I think opposed would be next. So you're not opposing and abstaining? Okay. So hopefully. I'm just gonna write, I'm just.
Four zero two.
Thank you. All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
And. Now, I'm sorry, that was long and I can hand it over. To. Beverly for the finance.
So the first agenda item we have for finance is approving of two vendor warrants. I'd like a motion to approve vendor warrant number twenty-one, in the amount of four hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty cents payable on November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? And the second is a motion for vendor warrant number twenty-two, in the amount of five hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy-three cents, dated on December seventh, twenty twenty-three. Have a motion?
So moved?
Second. All in favor? Now, I'm going to give you an update on the FY twenty-five budget, based on a meeting that we had this morning. We received a presentation by Doctors Burrows and Pavlichek about a more refined version of what was presented last week. There were some minor edits in terms of removing some of the requested staff and adding some to reflect the ask by the select board and the town administrator, that what we propose has a three-year perspective to reflect the fact that there's a likelihood that we will need an override. With that said, they also updated us with the fact that they've been meeting regularly with the town administrator and sharing information and getting feedback to inform our proposal. We do have a couple of follow-up items out of that meeting, basically more information or clarification around our transportation needs with some scenario planning, behavioral specialists, and whether or not, basically, the rationale for removing that from the previous ask, as well as the opportunity to subsidize dual enrollment to reflect the advanced placement credit fee price for our families. And we also had one more request for an ELL presentation, just to give a status update for us more formally about what is taking place instructionally. And I take that back, there's one more. There was a question about class sizes, especially as it relates to French immersion. Is there anything that I missed that you'd want to share?
There was also the data that we're waiting on from the high school, relative to economics.
Thank you. Okay, any questions? I think most of you were there at some point, and if, if anyone has a question, just let me know. It was a pretty straightforward meeting. I think the vast majority of the content we had was, was repetitive, which is a good thing. We're, we're getting very close to what will be the final proposal. And then last, we need to vote on the substitute pay. So anyone has not looked at the, it's basically recommending a daily substitute rate of a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day, a building substitute rate of one hundred and sixty-five dollars a day, a long-term sub-rate of two hundred and five a day, a retired teacher substitute rate of one hundred and thirty-five a day, and a daily substitute nurse rate of two hundred and forty dollars a day. And I want to say at the previous finance meeting, there was a question asked whether or not this will put us ahead or keep us competitive, and Dr. Pavlichek shared that it will keep us competitive, so that at least we are not going to lose substitute teachers to neighboring districts, because we're, we're under, we're underpricing this. So if there aren't any questions, I would love to get a motion to approve these rates. So moved? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Great, thank you so much. School building committee?
I think it's my turn.
Please.
Yeah.
So it was actually, we met on the twenty-ninth of November, and it was a relatively straightforward meeting. We did get an update that the PMA consultants, the contract with them had been executed, which is great. So this is a great, you know, level of support, I think, that the school building committee appreciates, in particular, I think, our chair. And, and so, you know, they'll be working with us to make sure that the cadence of our meetings, et cetera, and everything, and our, our minutes, which we have, were up to date and everything, but, you know, definitely have that additional support to keep things moving. We did get an update on the, the land swap that we're still waiting, that's not, the analysis is not complete yet. We still haven't heard from Mass School Building Authority, so no update, which is, we don't know exactly, you know, what that means as of yet. And then we, the big piece of act, of action that we took, big action step, was to approve the RFS for the architectural services that we need. And definitely mark if I left anything out.
Nailed it.
Sounds good. Questions, discussion of that? Okay, so then we can move on to approve our minutes from November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Were there any edits or corrections to the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve Milton School Committee meeting minutes stated November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Perfect, thank you. So that just brings us to next meeting agenda items. So we have Colicott State Council still. Annual report for review.
That's the report that goes into the town report that's published every year, that nice, big fat book that no one ever opens, but that's all right.
It's a thought that counts.
Yes, so that should be in preparation.
Will we have the FY twenty-five prioritized budget ready for presentation and vote? Okay.
See you in town.
We'll need to, right?
Mm-hmm.
With our timeline here.
Yep.
All right. And then.
Calendar.
Calendar.
Sounds cool.
Subcommittees, we will also have policy.
The student representative will meet in a couple of weeks, so, but the next meeting, I think, we'll have something to update.
Yeah, great.
I will be remote for that meeting next, in two weeks.
Yep. All right, anything else?
No, well, I don't think we have something scheduled for School Building Committee. If we run through our calendar.
Facilities. Facilities till January.
Okay, well, then I'll make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you, everybody.
Have a good day.